Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is the briefing meeting of the West Jordan City Planning and Zoning Commission, December 3rd, 2024. Welcome to all. All the commissioners are present except for Commissioner Allen, who is excused tonight. Commissioner Allen has joined us by Zoom. So for our briefing meeting, we have three items, Pearson Farms, and then two text amendments. Could we hear a briefing on the Pearson Farms application from Mark?
Sure. Yeah, so the petition for you tonight is for a preliminary major subdivision. This is for a 55-lot, single-family residential subdivision just going on in, off of Gardner Lane in about 1950 West. So this will be in an R18 zone that many of you may remember went through the planning commission back, back in the early months of this year. That rezone was approved, and so this is kind of the, the result of that rezone. So, so basically, this subdivision will have kind of the main continuation of 1950 West. Right now, it's just kind of a stub, and so that'll continue all the way down to Gardner Lane. And there'll be a few grid roads and cul-de-sacs just coming off of that for pretty good traffic flow through there. One of the items will, that the planning commission will need to look at tonight is just kind of the materials for the fencing along the canal. And the streets came, well, is mostly to city ordinances, but just kind of be aware of, of that as well.
I, I think I'd be more comfortable raising this question now than in the regular meeting, so I'll do it now. One of the issues for this subdivision, as is often the case, is traffic. And there's, I don't recall if there was a traffic study done, but I do think the doc, the planning or the staff document read that their traffic flow had been considered, and they thought it was, would be adequate, something.
Yeah, so there was a traffic study submitted. However, we have our traffic engineer here tonight, but, so he'll correct me if I'm wrong. But I believe that the subdivision wasn't really large enough to even really warrant much of a traffic study, but they provided one anyway, just noting that there was a lot of concerns from the neighbors. And so, so we looked at that, didn't really find a whole lot of, of issues with that. No level of service is still well within grade A. So they are, however, just kind of doing, they meaning the developer, going a little bit above and beyond just to kind of slow the traffic down. And so they're including a couple of traffic calming measures that I'll, I'll talk about in my presentation.
I guess my question is, who determines or what determines what is adequate?
That would be the traffic engineer, so Nestor, I'll let you kind of go over the detail.
Good evening, Chairman and planning commissioners. We, we got a neighborhood meeting about a month ago, and we embodied some of the neighbors within this surrounding area. And, and we showed them how traffic may or may not impact their, their, their streets. The number one reason for, for connecting these local roads is required by code and section 14 dash five, dash five. It requires that we connect subdivisions, streets and new subdivisions. And that we minimize as much as we can the car through traffic. That was part of the analysis. 55 lots of division may generate 550 trips, plus or minus, but most of the destinations are south of the subdivision. So it was estimated that there may be a car through traffic between the boundaries of the northern neighborhood and the new subdivision ranging between 5% to 10%. That's about 26 cars per day. So it's very minimum. So we fulfill the, the requirement of the, of the rule. Connectivity is also a requirement on the transportation master plan. It's also part of the code. And the last one is incorporate traffic calming. Like Mark said, we added a few chicanes or chokers to narrow the road width, and that will slow down traffic as, as they travel north through or south on 1950. Once a subdivision is built as part of the traffic calming program, we have traffic counters that we install citywide, but we'll monitor this street in particular to see if, in fact, the speed limit is being followed, respected by the, mostly the, the new neighbors or the neighbors coming from the north. And in the event that that's not the case, we coordinate with the police department, some enforcement. And the enforcement mainly consists on stopping drivers for a, for a warning and remind them that the posted speed limit is 25, and they shouldn't exceed certain speed limits. And then if that behavior continues, then they get, they get, they get a citation. Since we started this program about a year and a half ago, we were able to reduce the traffic speeding citywide from 10 out of, six out of 10 drivers, that's 56% citywide, to two out of 10 drivers. That's the ratio right now, and the national average is 18%, so it's about two out of 10 drivers. So based on the traffic impact studies submitted by the, by the developer, and based on our data collection and analysis, and we were able to present to the neighbors some of the pros and cons, which include an improvement on connectivity, an emergency response time for police and fire. We now provide another path to the schools, which they are located on the south, mainly the, the elementary school, middle school, and high school. We're going to be providing a new and safer path for residents that will reduce the number of trips that right now are going north and then go east, west to access some of those schools. Now they have the option to walk. We also provide access to grocery shopping, for instance. The nearest shopping center is Smith. So instead of going north and taking an extra few blocks to drive, they can access that even by walking. And access to the main highways, Redwood Road, 90th, and I-15, the path will not go north anymore, and then east and south, they will go south, then east. So overall, the city operation will also improve. We're providing a, a new route for snow plowing and garbage collection that is also part of this network of transportation that we're trying to improve as part of the new subdivision layout. I know it's a lot of information all at once, but if you have any questions.
That was very thorough. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for, or about this application? Okay. Larry, are you addressing the text amendments?
So the appeal authority text amendment. Let me preface it by say that, by saying that Utah law has had a provision for an appeal authority for many decades. And, and that is not only to, for someone, it doesn't necessarily be, be an applicant or anyone that's agreed by administrative decision. They could appeal that decision or a variance of the ordinance. And that's been accomplished by a board of adjustment for many decades. Most, all cities were required to have board of adjustment. And like I said, their, their primary function, their only function is to hear appeals. Say staff makes what they feel is an incorrect decision, then they would appeal that to the board of adjustment before it would go to the judicial review court. Now variance is a little different. The variance is meant to be a relief from strict enforcement of the zoning ordinance. Say, for instance, you're building a home, and there's a large hillside in your backyard, and it required your house to be pushed forward to build on an established lot in the city. Board of adjustment could hear that, you know, to reduce the setback. So it'd be a relief valve for property owners. About 10, or maybe it's even been longer than that, about, I'd say 15 or so years ago, the state of, the legislature changed the law to where appeal authorities could either remain as a board of adjustment, which is a five-member group of residents of the city, or it could be in the hands of one individual, which is most normally in cities of the first class, an administrative law judge. And so the feeling is that, and I'll go through some of the arguments in my presentation, that it is time for West Jordan to change from a board of adjustment of lay citizens and lay residents as an appeal authority, which at times can be fairly complex issues to an administrative law judge who is, who works in the city now, has a regular docket, and more or less is professionally trained in land use issues. And so that's what's before you tonight is changing, your recommendation to the city council to change the land use appeal authority from a board of adjustment to a one-person administrative law judge. Do you have any questions for me about that? And the second text amendment is about grave decorations. I guess I'm chosen to do this because I'm probably closest to the grave in the room. I don't know, but, just joking, folks, I'll be here all night. So right now, grave decorations are outlined in ordinance. And as we all know, from when I was a young person, grave decorations have changed wildly. You know, it used to just be flowers, and that was it. And now you see all kinds of things that I think reflect people's mourning or their love for their deceased friend or relative. And so I believe the council feels that rather than doing that in ordinance and have to continually change the ordinance, practices of the community, how long they want to leave it up, what type of things they want to put up, you know, when they should put it up, when they should take it down, probably rather than do that in ordinance, they should leave that up to the cemetery sexton to determine what is most appropriate for the cemetery and how grave decorations should be administered, quite frankly. And that is what's before you, is it will change it from an ordinance, and what the ordinance will say, rather than, say, you can have plastic flowers or not-plastic flowers or Mylar balloons or what have you, it will be up to the cemetery sexton to determine that. And the sexton is basically who manages the West Jordan Cemetery. And I believe we only have one sexton, I think he does both, said, West Jordan and Wright's Fort Cemetery. So, and there may be, you know, Wright's Fort is, it is a pioneer cemetery. You know, not that there's not pioneers in West Jordan Cemetery, because there are, but there may be different, you know, protocol for the different cemeteries. And so that's what you'll be making a recommendation of, positive or negative recommendation, however the planning commission feels on that. Any questions for that? It's exciting, grave decorations.
Somebody had to say it.
The mayor, she beat you to it.
Thank you, Mr.
Dying to get in there. That's why there's a fence around it. I could go on.
Thank you, Mr. Gardner. I assume we, I assume we do not have any training tonight. He's not listening, anyway. Okay, so if there's nothing else in our briefing meeting, we'll close, is closed. This is the December 3rd, 2024 meeting of the West Jordan City Planning and Zoning Commission. We will begin tonight with the pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Thomas. Please rise.
Please repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. That was item number one on the agenda, and item number two is the minutes from the November 19th meeting. Is there any discussion or questions about the minutes?
I'll go ahead and approve the minutes from our, our November 19th meeting.
Do you mean move to approve?
Move to approve, yes.
Thank you. Is there a second? Commissioner Roberts?
If my button will work, I'll second that motion.
Item number three is Pearson Farms, preliminary subdivision Platte. Is there representative here from MacArthur Homes, John Gassman? Please come to the microphones there.
How do I?
Hello?
And you guys don't kid around. Move right along here. Well, you may recall, I was last here back in, I think, March. We were looking at this parcel. It's about a 15-acre parcel, plus an additional acre owned by one of the daughters of the Pearson family, Emily Sosa. So it's about a total of about 16 acres between the two parcels. And at that time, we were looking to rezonate from agricultural to agricultural to R18, which you find people recommended, a positive recommendation to the city council, which they agreed with you, and we got that zoning the following month, in April, I believe it was. So it's that same parcel that we're here to talk about tonight. It's... Why don't you go ahead and go to the... Yeah, so these are the same slides you saw a year ago, and it really hasn't changed much, believe it or not. So this is from Gardner Lane, looking north, where the future entrance would be. The home on the right is nearing completion. That's the Sosa's building on there. That should be done in the next... I just talked to her half hour ago. They're hoping in the next two weeks to have that home completed. The home on the left is the old Pearson home, which will come down as part of the, as part of this Pearson Farms development. Go ahead to the next one, Mark. This is looking from the north. This is 1950 West, the stub road that stubs into the project, looking south. And then the next slide is from the canal, looking east. So, again, it really hasn't changed in a year. There's some cows there now, but that's about it. All right, then, Mark, if you'll go to that final slide. This, this concept is virtually, well, I think this is the same concept you saw a year. And kind of remarkably, it really hasn't changed much in a year. We've had a lot of input from all the different departments, including fire and police and all the public utility departments, and a lot of good input from Nestor with the traffic. And it really hasn't changed much. Some minor modifications, which we can talk about, and I think Mark will talk a little bit about. But let me just quickly hit on kind of the four, four important things that you guys are looking for. Is it consistent with West Jordan's goals and objectives? Again, it is. This site was master planned. It's low-density. We got the R18 zone, which conforms to that low-density master plan. Low-density ranges between 3.1 and 5.0 units per acre, and we're, we've ended up at about 3.3, 3.4 units per acre. So we meet there. It's consistent with surrounding properties. It's residential. The newest local subdivision is across the street, south on Gardner Lane, and just, and just a little west of there, which is Okubo Farms. Little bit bigger lots over there, but it'll be a similar feel. I think I mentioned to you back in March. This will be very similar to the Boulder Ranch project we did on 90th South and Mountain View Corridor. Same zoning. Homes will be some of the same floor plans that we built out there, and we will offer in Pearson Farms. So this is consistent, we believe, with West Jordan's goals and objectives. Is there adequate access for vehicles and pedestrians? Is it safe? As has been mentioned, we did submit, one of the very first things we did was a traffic study. Biggest thing that came out of that was the intersection at Gardner Lane and Redwood Road, which is currently in a failing status. Obviously, if you add 55 more homes, that's not going to help that go away. But I understand that is on the docket, UDOT's docket, for 2025 to signalize that intersection, which will resolve that issue. Otherwise, we think traffic-wise, it meets, it meets the conditions and requirements for the traffic for the area. Couple of things we have added. I know, I know, traffic has been the biggest concern, frankly, from the neighbors. We've done several things over the last nine months since I was here last, including meeting with Nestor, the mayor. It was kind enough to offer to do a neighborhood meeting, a town hall meeting, which we did on the, I think it was the 12th of November. And that was good. We got, there was a lot of questions asked, a lot of questions answered by various departments. The biggest one, of course, being, being traffic. We've got some traffic calming measures in there, most notably, kind of the curves in the road. 1950 West through Pearson will be a 50-foot right-of-way as opposed to the subdivision to the north, where it's a 60-foot right-of-way, because the city standard has changed since that time. And then we've also got some, some bump outs along 1950 West to help calm traffic. But according to Nestor's data, that's far more effective than speed bumps, and the public utilities people and emergency people prefer those over speed bumps. So, so we think we've demonstrated there's adequate access and that it's safe for the new residents of Pearson Farms and the existing residents as well. Are there, number three, are there adequate public facilities and infrastructure? In addition to the traffic study, we've done fire flow analysis to check the culinary water supply, and that meets the qualifications or the requirements. And sewer flow analysis also has adequate capacity to take the sewer north from Pearson Farms. Rocky Mountain Power has confirmed they're good to service the project. They've already got a preliminary layout, layout from, I wanted to say Dominion, but it's not Dominion anymore, Enbridge. So we've already got a preliminary concept for the subdivisions, so they'll service the project. As I said, fire and emergency personnel have been instrumental and involved in the development of our concept. So we're, at this point, I'm as confident as I can be that all the necessary infrastructure and services are available and we'll be able to service Pearson Farms. Lastly, does it comply with all the applicable ordinances and standards set forth by West Jordan City? Again, as far as I know, at this point, yes. Again, we've had a couple of different rounds of plan checks and red line comments with city staff. Those adjustments and changes to the Platte have been made. Obviously, we'll be still having to fine tune a few little things as we go towards final Platte. But there are things like, I mentioned, the old Pearson home that'll have to come down in order for the setback, you know, lot configuration to work. The existing home that they're building on, what'll be the future Lot 102, also falls within the required setbacks, the way the subdivision's designed. Anyway, so again, as far as I, as I know, and as I can tell at this point, we do comply with the applicable ordinances and standards as required by West Jordan City for Pearson Farms to be pruned. That's all I've got.
Okay, thank you.
Could we just get your name, please?
Name, John Gassman, with MacArthur Homes. G.A.S.S.M.A.N.
Speaking on behalf of the city, Mark Forsyth.
All right. Thanks. Well, John did a great job going over through pretty much everything I was going to talk about, so, great job. So I'll just do a couple of fill-ins. So just going over the zoning, as, as he had mentioned, it was zoned R18 last, well, this, March, April of this year. So that's a single-family residential zone with a minimum lot size of 8,000 square foot lots. So we've, we've looked over the proposal. All the lots are meeting those minimum lot sizes. And again, as he had mentioned, the existing Lot 102, which I'll pull up here. We've, we've kind of tweaked that, so it's, that existing home is meeting those current setbacks as well. The traffic, John and Nestor pretty much already went over that, so I'll just kind of show here the, kind of the differences in the widths of the road. You've got the 60-foot existing right-of-way, and then the 50-foot for all the new stuff. Then you've got some of these curves that'll kind of help with the traffic calming. And then you mentioned the bump outs. These are kind of what they look like. Those will shorten the width of the road down to 24 feet, so that'll kind of help with keeping the traffic speeds down. The only other thing I did want to mention is just the walls and fencing. So the first one is the wall that goes along the canal. The, we pretty much went with a vinyl fence, six-foot vinyl fence, just to kind of be consistent with the subdivision to the north. That's kind of a newer subdivision. Subdivision, or, excuse me, the subdivision to the south. The subdivision to the north is, is a little bit older, and so you have kind of more of a hodgepodge of different fence types. And so we thought a vinyl would be a little bit more consistent, but ultimately, the, the materials are up to the planning commission. And then the, there's a streetscape wall that's going to be going in. So Gardner Lane is a collector road, and so per code, we do require that a streetscape wall be, be put in place there. We're only requiring it on Lot 127, just because lots 102 and 101 directly face Gardner Road, so they'll actually have driveway access directly onto Gardner Lane. And it really didn't make a whole lot of sense in putting a masonry wall across there, so... So yeah, that's, that's why you'll see it in the, in the location. It is there. But as far as materials go, that's going to have to be a masonry material, similar to the wall across the street. And so a lot of those details will be worked out through final review. And then just lastly, these are just kind of some standard requirements of approval, but a lot of this just kind of reinforces, like we talked about, the demolition of the existing home on lots 126 and 127, just to, since it's straddling that property line, just clearing that out so that we can build two homes on there. And then number two, this deals with the, the space between the existing sidewalk and park strip and where the streetscape wall will actually be. So the MacArthur Home is actually required to dedicate about 10 feet there to plan for a future widening of Gardner Lane. We don't know when that'll actually happen. It could be well into the future, but with new development, we do have to kind of plan for that. So there's just going to be kind of this no man's land between the sidewalk and the, and the, the wall. So until that, those new improvements get put in and Gardner Lane is actually widened, we wanted to have some kind of a landscaping there, just to have it kind of be, look nice, and then kind of keep down on the maintenance. So the Parks Department suggested kind of a mix of rocks and, and some boulders there. So, so that's what condition number two is implying. So anyway, so with that, based on the findings in the staff report and those in the presentation, staff is recommending approval of the preliminary subdivision Platte.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yeah, I just got one quick question. It's kind of related, but on the speed bumps and stuff like that, how much of a problem is that for our Public Works with snow removal?
So there, there's actually not any speed bumps in this subdivision. They've elected to go with, with the bulb outs instead.
Okay, those, how about?
Yeah, so the fire department's looked at those, and they've met their, their clearances to get, get through there.
I just was curious about Public Works. Do you know anything? I mean, it's kind of unrelated, maybe?
Prefer to Nestor on that one.
Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission, we, we discussed these options for traffic calming. There are, we have a toolbox with nine or 10 different options. The bulb outs was the, the option that was preferred by the majority. We have a, what is called a neighborhood traffic management committee, with members of the street department, fire department, police department, public involvement, the mayor attends a meeting, and engineering. And this option was selected for a number of reasons. Number one is, is going to have an impact on the vision of the driver. Once you have a, a long road, that promotes acceleration, and with acceleration comes speeding. So by narrowing the, the road, the vision creates that vision tunnel. They have a tendency to slow down. Besides having a vehicle coming in the opposite direction, getting closer, psychologically forces the driver to slow down. So that's the number one. Number two improves pedestrian safety. By having pedestrian crosses, pedestrian crossing being 22 feet versus 27 feet, we narrow the length of the walk, consequently improves safety for, for pedestrians, which will include children going to school or going to visit some of their friends within the neighborhood. Regarding snow plowing, we're running through the street department. They are not a big fan of this, because of now, they have, their blades are 14 feet wide. But when they have to choose between speed bumps and traffic calming measurements like this, they have horizontal deflections. They prefer these kind of options. So during winter season, these bump outs will have delineators to guide the driver. They, they need to move to the right or left, and the snow will be collected on the, on, on, on the park strip. So we got the, the support and the approval of the different members from the Neighborhood Traffic Calming Committee.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Commissioner Hollingsworth?
Yeah, so concerned about the street parking for the houses, specifically lots 106, 105, 122, and 123. With that narrow point there, is there still going to be ample parking for street parking if people need to park in front of those houses?
Yeah, so, so this road running through here, this is our typical standard for, for a local road or neighborhood road. So this is, you'll see this in every new subdivision throughout West Jordan. So there, obviously, there won't be room for any parking where the bulb out actually is, but off to the side, it'll be just the same as any other local road.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Hatch?
Is this going to be an HOA, or is this a city?
There's not going to be an HOA. So the detention pond, you see up there in the northeast corner, that'll be owned and maintained by the city.
Okay. I have a concern with the fencing, the white fence that runs along the canal. Where I live, we have a fence that runs along the Jordan River Parkway, and it's that same plastic fence. Not only do they love to throw rocks and make holes in it, but it's a perfect canvas for graffiti. And this, I'm seeing this as a very long, beautiful way to just decorate that fence with spray paint. And that would be my concern with putting a plastic fence up there, also with throwing rocks and damaging the fence. So I'm, that's my concern. How we mitigate that would be to put in, you know, a concrete or mason fence, and I'm, that would increase the cost significantly. But I am worried about that. I don't even know how to resolve that issue, other than asking the builder what they're comfortable with doing or what you think the mitigation would be with, if we do put in the fence. That's going to be the city's cost to maintain. I mean, with our, our HOA, we clean off the graffiti, but if it's a city property, then they will be cleaning off that graffiti and repairing.
The other option we could do, there are some other types of fence that we could look at, like a metal rod iron. You know, it's not, obviously, you're not going to have the opaque screening with that, but it, it could help with the graffiti issue. Just a thought.
Well, I share Commissioner Hatch's concern. If there is a vinyl fence there and it gets broken, like we see on, sometimes on the internet, or if snowplow breaks it with the, with their pushing snow around, it's not likely to happen along a canal, but my point is, if the fence is broken, let's say a week after it's installed, who's responsible to fix it?
I believe under current city ordinances, it's the adjacent property owner that's responsible to maintain it and keep it the way it is.
So it's not going to get fixed?
I think there has been some discussion about changing that, though. Oh, sorry, this, we've been looking at street walls, but not necessarily canal walls, so...
I'm sorry, you cut out at the very end. You, you were looking at street walls?
So the city's been looking at a maintenance ordinance for street walls for some time now. It's kind of gone back and forth. We haven't really gotten it to the finish line yet, but, but yeah, that would only affect street walls. It wouldn't affect any other walls along the canal or, or other places.
So if the, if the resident who has, is their back, their backyard is next to the canal, and they do have graffiti on the other side of their fence, is there a way for them to access that, to clean off the graffiti?
Not that I'm aware of the current plan, no.
Yeah, I have a problem with that. Yeah, I have a problem with that. I I just don't see that as a long term. Salute, I mean. Yeah, I I have a, I have a problem with the vinyl fencing, I think it needs to be something that is going to prohibit. Graffiti and if it does need to be be maintained by the resident, they need to have access to the. The canal facing side in order to maintain it.
Commissioner Roberts?
I will be the next voice to back up objection to the white vinyl, I know there's other. You know, with regard to the graffiti issue, there's, you know, gray vinyl and tan vinyl and things like that that we could put up that would probably be a little bit more of a deterrent to graffiti, but it doesn't resolve the maintenance issue. And, yeah, and I don't know that it really efficiently resolves the graffiti. There also are other materials like Trex fencing and things like that, that would be a middle ground between. Vinyl and going to masonry or something like that, so those are things to consider, I think.
Sorry, maybe at the end, when we're all done with our questions, we can have the applicant come up and we can discuss possible options.
I think we'll do that now, Mr. Gasman, did this issue come up during any of your during your meeting with the citizens? Residents?
The fencing?
Yes.
No, that never, that never came up because again, it borders the canal. I totally appreciate the concern, understand the concern. I don't know that. Any solid fence you put there is going to be subject to graffiti, so I don't know how to mitigate that and that side of the fence is really going to be up to the canal company, they've got signs posted that say no trespassing, right? So in terms of repairing a fence, yeah, you would hope that the homeowner would take a little pride in their property and repair a damaged fence. But any solid fence you put up, whether it's precast concrete like is up there or chain link with slats, you know, the. Any kind of, I don't know how you. What 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 is this? Okubo borders the canal, doesn't it? And it's got white vinyl, what's?
Yeah, it's either Okubo or the one next to it.
Well, the Kubos.
But yes, it does.
On the other side of the canal, so to graffiti, they'd have to actually be walking in the canal. Where yours is is the canal or is it the canal road next to your development, I'm not sure.
I just wondered if it's been a problem down there.
No, because they'd be walking, they'd be walking in water to build the graffiti at where I believe yours is. Next to the canal road.
Canal road, nevertheless. Yeah, I was just curious, how how it was handled down there, because it's the same. Either way, it doesn't matter which side of the canal you're walking on, you'd see the graffiti. So I don't know, I mean, you could you could go to a. Maybe it was Mark that mentioned to do a wrought iron, typically don't do them out of wrought iron anymore, typically aluminum, right, and an open type fence. The problem I see with that is. I think if you do that, we as the developer go spend the money to do that and nine out of ten homeowners are going to go stick a white vinyl fence just inside of it. Because they want the privacy. Or to keep the dog in or whatever it is, right, and now you're back to the same problem. So I don't know.
You're not back to the same problem because if the if the property owner installs the fence, it's going to be their understanding that they're responsible to repair it. With you installing the fence, it's it's no man's land. You can say that the, you can say, the city can say, well, it's your your job to do that property owner, but. There's a lot of things the city says property owners are supposed to do that they don't do.
Right, the question is if it got graffitied?
No.
Would they, would they go, would they go clean it?
If it got damaged.
They're not, they're. But if I install, as a developer, if I install it, as soon as a as soon as a homeowner buys that, it's now their fence. They own the white vinyl fence behind their house now, it's part of their property. So I don't see that that's any different, but if they, if I do a an iron open type fence and they go install their own. And now it gets graffiti, again, I still don't know if they'll wait to enforce. Making them clean that when they can't access it from the.
Well, I think if it's, I think it seems to me if it's clear to the property owner that it that is now their responsibility, their fence, I think we're better off, yes.
And again, any any fence I install will be that property owner's fence.
So can I read read the ordinance, what the authority is, so. And this is in the fencing portion of the zoning ordinance and it's part D, this is waterways, canals and ditches. All open waterways, canals and ditches shall either be piped or fenced with a six foot fence. The planning commissioner zoning administrator shall approve the fencing material, which may include wrought iron fencing. So there's many different types of fencing material, it doesn't say wall, it just says a fencing fencing material now. Wrought iron spin out, vinyl spin up, I haven't heard mention of chain link, most of our canals are fenced with chain link. You know, quite frankly, and it's probably the most durable material, but I don't know. How that affects the sale of, you know, a lot of these homes are going to be very expensive. And I think that it's probably the same issue. That's going to occur as somebody building a million dollar home is probably going to put a fence they want up, not chain link and so. I think that the fencing is for safety. And not so much for the criminal element, I don't know if you're ever going to stop the criminal element from defacing property, it's unfortunate they do. But, you know, just food for thought, that's what I'm saying.
Thank you.
I would be curious to know, Larry, I think those are good points, I would be curious to know, again, whether it's Okubo or whatever the subdivision is on the south side, has it has it been, have we seen a problem over there?
Okay, thank you, just a minute, sir.
I I guess, I didn't even realize the access road was on on that side of the property, I thought it was on the other side, so having an access road there even. Compounds the problem, but it also does allow the resident to go in and clean the graffiti because they can actually drive on the access road, so I see. That is a good and a bad thing. It's just my concern then if we get graffiti on there and it's not removed, then it just becomes another. Eyesore in our city and we're trying to eliminate those and and there may be no way to eliminate this, this just may be. The joy of homeownership, I know with our on the parkway, we probably clean graffiti off there in the summer months at least twice a week. And they've got great products that do it, but it it takes it takes some effort. And we have actually a person that goes out every morning to see if there's graffiti so that we can clean it off, so it doesn't build up. Again, I don't know how we mitigate that, but just a concern that I have.
Thank you. I think I neglected to mention at the start of the meeting that all commissioners are present except for Commissioner Allen, is he still with us online?
Still here.
Oh, there you are, do you have any questions regarding this application?
I do, you guys hit almost all of them, which is awesome. I'm I'm curious on the the fencing issue and I do appreciate the comments, I I side quite a bit with Larry on this one. Just from the perspective of while it is a problem, I don't know how much we can. Do to mitigate it. But one of the the notions that came out, at least I heard, was. Providing these homeowners some form of access, right, there's no trespassing signs. So how are they supposed to even, even if they left the neighborhood, walked around and came in from from Gardner Lane? Could they get to the back to take care of some of the spray paint, doesn't sound like they could. And it doesn't sound like the canal company would want gates on those back fences either, so. I would be curious just to know from a. A standpoint of if there was graffiti on there, would it be? The canal company's responsibility or do they have any interest in that fence, or is the fence a hundred percent on the property? The the residential properties. The second question I had that probably much, much easier for Mark is the piece of property that is going to be. Dedicated to the city. That is the retention basin, does the city have any additional plans for that?
Yeah, so I'll, let me go over to this slide, but. Yeah, you can kind of see there in the the top northeast corner there. Yeah, so they will be landscaping that corner of our standards and that'll be surrounded by a a chain link fence with slats, so. So yeah, that'll just really be owned and maintained by the city. But other than that, it's it's really just going to remain a detention basin.
So no, no potential for a local park or anything like that, it's literally just fully fenced off, it's only ever.
Yeah, no, it won't be a park or or amenity or anything like that, it's just strictly for for stormwater.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any more questions? Okay, this item was noticed for public hearings, so public hearing is now open for Pearson Farms preliminary subdivision plat. Sir, if you are, you're here to speak, now is your chance, state your name and you can have three minutes, up to three minutes.
My name is Steve Losi, I spoke with you previously when you approved the the smaller sized lots for this project. I own two and a half acres adjacent to this and my concern is the animals. If they put vinyl fence up, right now it's got a chain link fence and if they put vinyl fence in. Once again, they throw rocks and it's easy to kick the vinyl fence through. We'd much rather see a substantial, at least a six foot. Chain link along there so that even if they break a vinyl fence, if they add it later, they can. It's got some substantial fence that they're not going to get through to the animals. And I think I speak with. The other landowners as well, they have animals along that same ditch in fence line.
Thank you, Mark, can you point out to us the property he's talking about so we can see where that, where the animals are and where the fence is?
Yeah, so the the west boundary, that's that's all the canal, so I'd I would assume he's talking about the on the east side. But as far as I know, along the east side, all of that's just existing chain link. And the city code doesn't necessarily require anything there, the only time it requires. A fence similar to like the canal, for instance, is when you've got two uses that are. Roughly incompatible, basically, if if you've got a more intense use coming in next to an existing lower intense use. But in this case, it's, we figured it's really just single family residential next to single family residential, so. We haven't really suggested anything unless the planning commission disagrees.
Mr. Hollingsworth?
The intent on the east side of the properties to replace that chain link fence or to leave the chain link fence there?
Right now, the plan is just to leave everything as is.
Thank you.
If you are on a phone, you may identify yourself by pressing star six, if you're on Zoom, raise your hand.
I saw two people online, but I don't see any hands raised.
Still nothing? Okay. Then public hearing is now closed on item number three. Does anybody wish to make a motion?
Okay, procedurally, how can I, how can we, I mean, I'm concerned with the fence, I love the development, that's my only worry, do I just let that go and let the homeowners deal with that? I mean, I'm not sure where to where to push that or how to push that or even if it's needed. Thoughts?
The fence along the canal is required.
I understand that.
So the issue or. The planning commission's responsibilities determine the type of material. Whether it be chain link vinyl. You know, I, we have had other developments that have required a wall, you know, but that, like you said, that is extremely expensive. Is that needed, you know, to. Prevent the safety issue the canal presents. You know, and I think Duncan is isn't the the least acceptable, you know, you can say it better than I do, but. The least acceptable mitigation is what.
Right, I mean, it almost becomes kind of an exaction type issue, right, and if if. If there are two different methods which meet the safety requirement of the adjacent uses. Typically, it's preferable to use the one that's most cost effective, right? Especially if it meets the, so I think, and that's what Larry's saying, is the code pretty much focuses on. You looking at which type of material is the best and I think part of that is looking at which is the one. That's the least impactful, the least expensive, whatever, that meets all of this health and safety requirements, that's kind of your. Maybe your way of exercising that authority of as to what type of material, that's kind of your standard.
You know, and. Chain link or the aluminum, that, you know, see through, if people choose to put vinyl up, they choose to put vinyl up, but I think that meets the the ordinance. And now if the ordinance said, for instance, as it does on a street wall, that it needs to be masonry or concrete, then that'd be a different manner, but. I don't think that mandate is in the ordinance that a wall is, but it is up to the planning commission to determine the material now, the fencing between the properties. I don't think we have anything in the ordinance that the planning commission could mandate that because. The animal owner is responsible to contain their animals. Now, he says there's a chain link fence there now and I think that's worked for a long time. And but I, and I'm not taking anyone's side. Other than the cities, but I just don't think we have the authority to require someone to put up a new fence for someone. For someone else's animals is what I'm saying, you know, no offense, I'm not trying to to be mean or say, but I'm just. Purely operating within the bounds of the ordinance, so.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah, I have a further question for Duncan, with regard to the consideration of the. The. Least expensive product that meets the need, are we only allowed to consider the immediate need of putting a fence up? Or are we allowed to consider the durability of rocks coming through?
Yeah, you can take into account durability, the long term nature of it, absolutely, and and it's all types of safety, right? It's, it could be safety of animals, of course, it's safety for humans, especially children, right? But. Yeah, absolutely, you can look at the the durability and long term nature.
Mr. Hatch?
So the fence on the east side is chain link, that's going to stay, it's in place, that's worked for many, many years to keep animals separate from and I'm. Letting, I'm I'm not concerned with that, what I am concerned about is the canal. I would like to, I mean, I think our least expensive and probably the most effective is chain link, as ugly as it is. And then if the residents want to put a vinyl fence up to block their chain link, that's fine, but I think the chain link will just provide enough of a deterrent. To, it won't make a beautiful graffiti sign, so to me, I think chain link is. A viable option, but I'll, I'm open to discussion and thoughts.
Commissioner Talos?
I agree with the chain link and you can put slats in it to make it more of a privacy and it's more of a deterrent for graffiti too. And it's easier to replace too, so. And it's probably cheaper. Overall, so. In my opinion, that might be the way to go.
It's definitely durable, I mean, rocks aren't going to impact it.
Chair, could I ask a question?
Who's speaking?
Hamon.
Yes, go ahead.
So I I I'm a hundred percent on with the the chain link notion as well. Given that the the fence is built by the developer, but then owned by the property owner afterward. Is there anything stopping the property owner, a future property owner, from taking out that portion of chain link and replacing it with offensive they're choosing?
No.
Yeah, so that that clinches it even more for me, just put in the chain link fence. Just put in the chain link fence and let the individual property owners, as they buy it, know what they're going into, seeing the chain link fence, and let them make the decision.
I will, I will offer a counterpoint, just for the sake of, I don't know, no, I'm not, I'm not going to offer that counterpoint. We're ready for a motion. Nobody's willing to make a motion?
I'll go ahead and make the motion. Based on the information and findings set forth in the staff report and upon the evidence and explanations received today, I move that the planning commission approve the preliminary major subdivision plan for the Pearson Farms located at 1996 and 1986 South Gardner Lane in an R1 zone with the conditions and requirements of approval listed in the staff report with the modification of the chain link fence on the canal road.
Commissioner Hatch?
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Commissioner Allen?
Aye. Not, not opposed. Yes, four.
Thank you. Okay, let's move to item number four, text amendments. Regarding
Okay. So, sorry. This text amendment is, I thought I was hitting my mouse, but I was hitting my button. Is to change appeal authorities, uh, in the city. Now, as I stated in the pre-meeting, uh, cities are required by state law to have an appeal authority for administrative decisions. Currently, the board of adjustment functions as that, uh, appeal authority. And, and as, I'll just quickly go through these bullet points. The BOA is composed of five residents appointed by the mayor. The only requirement is that a BOA member be a resident. Anyone agreed by a decision of staff. So if I make a decision they don't agree with, uh, it could be appealed, appealed to the board. The board also issues variances from requirements of the zoning ordinance and other land use regulations if a hardship can be established. And that's a long, convoluted explanation that I'm not going to go through because it would probably take me 20 minutes to what establish a hardship means. What it means is basically is that the lot is creating the problem. You aren't creating the problem, in a nutshell. I don't know, Duncan, I don't know if that, in a nutshell, answers what a hardship is. So BOA's authority is established by state law, uh, just as the planning commission's authority is and by West Jordan ordinance. An appeal authority is not required to be a multi-person board, such as a board of adjustment. And it can be one person, such as administrative law judge. And the, uh, Land Use and Development Act of law, state law was changed 15, 20 years ago, I think now, um, to allow that. And municipalities may also have different appeal authorities for different appeals and variances. So say that they found that administrative law judge wasn't working well for variances. They could, in essence, appoint a variance board or whatever in the future. So how does this benefit the city? Replacing the board of adjustment with a ALJ, which is what basically the ordinance will do. Board of adjustment members are generally not trained professionals, but residents of the community. And I say generally because I worked in a city once where they had a board of adjustment and four out of the five board of adjustment members were land use attorneys. And so that made some, for some very interesting meetings, you know? Needless to say, because that's what they did every day. That is not common in the least. And, and the other problem with board of adjustments, they only meet when they're, they're needed. They're, they don't meet every month. Or they don't meet enough most of the time to keep their skills honed. Um, a couple of years ago, we met, I think, four months in a row once, and that was very unusual for any place I'd ever worked. And last year, what did we meet, twice, Julie? And then the other meetings were just basically training. And if you showed up for a meeting in October and had training and you went back next March, how much of that training would you remember? You know? So you can see, uh, their meetings are so sporadic, it requires training at every meeting, and specifically in what you're talking about. And the time is limited, you know, half hour to, to, this is what you need to look for, or this is what you need to do. And it really becomes reliant, heavily reliant upon staff to make a lot of decisions that should be made by the appeal authority. And that, that had, quite frankly, that has been a point of contention with elected officials at times is, well, they're just wagging the tail, staff, you know, they're just following what staff is saying, which, you know, we try to give uh, the most, uh, professional, best interests of the city following the ordinance's opinion. But sometimes it comes across that, you know, staff is making the decision, which is probably not a good look, you know? Land use variances, appeal issues are complex. It may not be fully understood by residents that have little or no exposure to land use issues other than an infrequent meeting. And some of the issues can be quite, uh, complex, you know? But in order to get to court where more, where a judge may be more savvy or may not, you know? They may have absolutely no interest when you get to court, uh, about land use issues. But most likely they're attorneys, so at least they understand the law. But they have to go through an appeal authority of the city first. Most BOA meetings consist of training and not actually practicing the appeals or variants, you know? So that's, like I said, we do a lot of where we just do training. And training is best when it's put into practice, you know? An administrative law judge is professionally trained and hired based on their qualification, understands complex land use issues based on qualifications. Uh, the ALJ already has a docket of city administrative issues to deal with. The current ALJ, I should say. I'm not saying that that's who, uh, the administration will choose to hire, but that is one point. If they do choose them, they're already familiar with the city and the processes and who they would be working with. And they do not require training at every meeting because of their professional experience. So that is my arguments. I've worked in another community where we went from a board of adjustment to administrative law judge, and it, it worked very well. And that community had, the administrative law judge happened to be our police chief now, Ken Wallantine. So he, and he was an attorney, he is an attorney, and he, he understood the issues and it worked very well. And I'm not saying Ken Wallantine's going to step down for being police chief to administrative law judge. But, um, in the, the city of the size of West Jordan, it may be time to uh, at least give the residents that due. And Duncan, correct me if I'm wrong, if the city chooses that this isn't working, they always could go back to a board of adjustment. It's not prohibited in law. Do you have any questions for me? I feel like I'm rambling now.
Thank you, Mr. Gardner. Commissioner Hatch?
I just have a question on representation. Those who are filing an appeal, will they feel like having one person, uh, one person's opinion? Will they feel that's enough? Are they going to, how will they, is it biased opinion? I mean, how will they be reassured that this is a neutral opinion coming from a West Jordan city employee?
Well, I mean, this one person appeal authority would be, uh, appointed by contract, uh, approved by the mayor. They're not technically a city employee. They'd be a independent contractor that's neutral. It's typically an ALJ. Like we have an ALJ right now for the code enforcement process. We've had it for the last several years. It's worked really well. Um, the one we currently have is a full-time administrative law judge for the state of Utah. I think he does cases with the labor division. I don't know other divisions of state government. So he's completely neutral in that he doesn't live in West Jordan. He doesn't work here as a regular employee. His regular full-time job is something completely different. Well, it's for a different entity, albeit it's for this, you know, it's for appeals, right? So he's got the expertise. And we actually have also, uh, recently, remember, we made a change, I can't remember if it was a year or so ago, to have a separate, uh, one person, uh, conditional use revocation and appeal authority. And now this is kind of a logical extension, a regular land use appeal authority. These could be th- three different people. It could be all the same person, uh, it could be two people doing one of those things and another, uh, the third thing, just depending on the level of expertise. But typically, you've got a heightened level of neutrality when you get an independent person that doesn't live or work in the community and that comes in with outside expertise and applies it to people he doesn't even know, right? And the facts are what they are, the law is what it is, and they, they act upon it. Uh, the, a little distinction there is, we do technically have one other appeal authority that's been in our code. That's not changing. When it comes to fees, the city council is the appeal authority. So if somebody doesn't like a, a land use fee that they're being charged, uh, they appeal that to the council, which kind of makes sense, especially under our former government where the council uh, isn't, you know, is the one in charge of the money, so to speak, right? But yeah, from, your main question was, um, the neutrality. I think it's actually a heightened level of neutrality to have one outside person versus five people that have to live here, right? So.
Thank you. I didn't, I, I guess I just assumed it was going to be a West Jordan employee. And if it's, if it isn't, then that, that neutrality is evident.
Other questions?
I have a comment, Chair. So in my workplace, I, I've had the opportunity to go before both of these types of appeal authorities. And from my experience, what we are recommending tonight has always been the more fair, clear. You think about it, it's somebody who, who does this for a living and knows very well what their boundaries are and what they're trying to accomplish. And I have no offense to any of us here, uh, when you have citizens that are doing the same thing, sometimes there's a a propensity to get out of the lane or to bias it in some way. So I, I think this is a very, very positive direction for the city.
Thank you, Commissioner Allen. I will add to that. I served for a while on the West Jordan City Board of Adjustment, and, uh, I agree that this is probably a wise change. There may be a concern about neutrality, but I think the, my concern over, um, one's, uh, level of understanding of land use law is probably, probably overrides, uh, the concern about neutrality. Are there other questions or comments? If not, we'll proceed to public hearing. This item is now open for public hearing. Nobody here? Anybody online?
There is one person online, but there is not a hand raised.
If there's no hand raised, then we will close public hearing. Still no hand, Julie? Okay. Commissioner Gonzalez?
I will go ahead and make a motion. Um, based on the information and criteria set forth in the staff report and upon the evidence and explanations received today, I move that the planning commission forward a positive recommendation to the city council for this application.
Mr. Roberts?
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, item number five, another text amendment regarding grave decorations. Mr. Gardner?
Okay, grave, this, uh, ordinance, uh, will amend code section eight, 14, seven. It's really not in the zoning ordinance, but it is a land use regulation. Uh, that's the reason the planning commission is making a recommendation. And what this ordinance, uh, amendment does is it takes the time, place and manner or how grave decorations are placed upon graves, what they are and how long they could be done. Uh, it takes it out of the ordinances and gives the authority through the ordinance to the cemetery section to determine that. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions? Seeing none, this item was also noticed for public hearing. Public hearing is now open for the text amendment regarding grave decorations. Anybody online? There's nobody here.
There is still no, no hands raised.
Public hearing is now closed. Would somebody like to make a motion? Commissioner Gonzalez?
I will go ahead and make a motion. Based on the information and criteria set forth in the staff report and upon the evidence and explanations received today, I move that the planning commission forward a positive recommendation to the city council for this application.
Commissioner Hollingsworth?
I second it.
Motion has been made and seconded. Do forward a favorable recommendation. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
Thank you. That is unanimous. Commissioner Thomas?
I move that we adjourn.
We are adjourned.